And. Okay, so citizens comments, anybody?
Yes.
Dave, what do you got?
I got some good news this Monday from CPTC. Their twenty, the twenty twenty-three annual conference at Holy Cross will be held on March eighteenth of this year. Uh, this is the first time since twenty nineteen that they're gonna have it because of, you know, covid and stuff. So um, they said that in February, they'll send out more information and registration. So I just wanted guys to know in case somebody might be interested in going. That's all I have.
Awesome.
Excellent, thank you. You're welcome.
Okay. All right, let's move on. We mostly have discussion items. I'm just gonna say upfront, uh, we have discussion items mostly here today, uh, beyond actually approving our meeting minutes. Um, I know we have a couple of members that need to leave by eight. They have a meeting at eight thirty, and in fact, the Zoom has to be taken over at eight thirty. So we will be ending no later than eight twenty-five today. Um, just so we're clear on that. And so since that's happening, I don't think we need to move anything around really in the agenda because we are going to end before you all have to go unless you are traveling somewhere. But if you're not, I think if you're just gonna be like moving into the Zoom after this, then I think we'll be fine with eight twenty-five.
Think we're good.
Okay, excellent. So let's just roll down the agenda then, friends. Um, we've got the MBTA community zoning discussion. We've been working on the uh, our, our initial piece that will, that we need to submit by the end of January, I think is the deadline. Um. Vinnie, I know you've been working on that. Thank you very much for submitting to Trish what we needed, uh, to CMRPC what we needed.
Yes, yeah, and so we put, uh, Trish from CMRPC pulled together, uh, all the information at our meeting last month. And she put together a package, just kind of bring you up to date, Frank, putting together a package for the, uh, to begin in compliance with chapter thirty R or whatever it is. And maybe a regulation from the state to qualify for funding for grants and other, um, money. And so we want to still apply for that, and it includes, uh, changing the zoning in town to, uh, allow for higher density housing. And we're looking at places and we'll probably have a discussion at the next meeting of where it's being proposed. But generally, the idea is to have something in town to comply with the zoning. We don't, we needed a section of about thirty-nine acres or so, and I think we have that. And CMRPC is pulling together all the paperwork and gonna submit it to the state for us.
All right. Yeah, I think you brought that up in December, I, if I remember, something came up about that.
Yep, yes, yeah, that was the process that we started, right?
All right.
Okay, moving right along then, uh. So the appointment of the delegate and alternate to the CMRPC commission. Our job here at the planning board is to have a delegate to go. Um, now, Raj, do you have a question?
Yeah, I like to be the delegate and I will make Mark as an alternate when he goes to the select board.
Okay, that sounds fine with me.
So. Mark, do you want to be alternate on the select board side?
Yeah, I'll stay alternate. I was gonna suggest the same thing. No, that's perfect.
Okay, it's all done.
Excellent. That sounds great. Thanks, guys. Um, all right, so we're going into old business.
We need a motion on that.
Oh. Do we do, do we do motions when we do the appointment things?
When we do the appointments, we kind of, we do it as a slate.
A slate of things. Okay, oh, that's true. That, that actually was my confusion because I, because our, in June, Mark, we designated you as our delegate.
That's true, that's true.
Which, so then I got confused here because I was like, didn't we already do this here in June? But apparently, they work on a calendar year and we work on a
Host election.
Host election year, right, exactly. Okay, so. That's great. So sure, I will entertain a motion to have, uh, Raj be our delegate from the planning board.
Yep, I think you moved that. Is that, did you make that motion already, Raj?
No, you, somebody else has to make a motion.
So somebody just say so moved based on what I just said.
I just, uh, I just expressed my interest.
Oh, okay.
I'm not make, I'm not going to make my own motion.
Then I'll say so moved, so I can get out of a position for the first time ever.
All right, all right.
Yeah.
Mark said so moved based on what I said. I need a second.
I second that.
Thank you, Frank. All right, we're gonna do a roll call though. Raj?
Yes.
Vinnie?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Excellent. That is passed. Thank you, Raj, for representing us. We appreciate that. Okay, um, so let's move on to old business now. Uh, we, we got a couple of things in front, but since Mr. Lankarski is here, why don't we go ahead and do the twenty Holt Street update right now? Um. I will, I mean, I, I don't, I don't know what I of any particular updates beyond the fact that VHB I know has connected with you um, in regards to the bond estimate and, and other inspections.
Sarah? Are you speaking to me on that?
I think that's, I, that's the only thing I know. Um, I don't know if anybody else has any others, but I, I, I imagine that you would be the only other person who has an update.
Yeah, the only, actually to jump in there, uh, the only update I have is that we had sent, uh, or I saw car funds go to VHB. And, uh, there was something, I think it was sent to town council, their review for the, uh, homeowners association and the paperwork, the, the documents. So I think you sent that, right, Sarah?
I did not send documents to them. I asked them the question about, um, about the, the, um, temporary occupancy was the question that I asked about. Did you send me something that needed to be forwarded to?
Yeah, there was a document because there was a question about, they have to, town council has to review the homeowners association as part of the conditions in the approval. And we have a homeowners association model in the subdivision regulations. So I was gonna have you, or I think I emailed and I thought I suggested that you send it to town council, send the document we got from Lankarski's of what currently is on, at the registry of deeds. And what we were intending for it to contain from our model, uh, bylaw or our model, um, homeowners association, and then have them say that it meets it, it's fine, or what needs to get changed.
I saw the thing about the sample HOA that was asked about, but that was asked by Jen. Um, I, I mean, if that, I apologize, if that happened, I missed it.
Yeah, if you were away, it was over the Christmas period, I can try to find it.
I did not, I did not see that over the, over the Christmas time, so, um.
I actually sent that to the board on December eighth.
And I know we talked about it at our last meeting, which I don't remember what date that was, but.
December seventh.
Right. Yes, sorry, cuz he sent it, he sent it to Melanie.
I apologize. It was not clear that it was my job to send it to town council to review it for you. Um, so I did not do that. My apologize, I, my apologies, I can send it now.
I, I can pull it together again. I, I had a draft email, so should be okay with that.
Yeah, kinds of easements and that, yeah, anyway, I didn't do that, sorry. Uh, so, so that's not been, that's not been reviewed by town council at this point.
And that's our update, I think, right?
Yep, I, yeah, but I, what I did ask about, right after the meeting, cuz that was the part that was in my brain was to ask about the temporary permit. I did not receive a response about that.
About whether the rule was that they, they had to have all of them?
Correct. That was, that was, that was my question about it.
Yeah, was that answered?
No, but no.
It was the issue with the homeowners association, just the fact that it's different than ours, but it's already submitted, so we're just trying to find out if it's equivalent?
Yes, and I think what I had sent off was the idea that the home, the model homeowners association included stuff about stormwater operation and maintenance. Uh, maintenance of all the utilities on the site and trying to keep the town separate. And so it talks more about the site work because it's site plan review. And the one that we got from the Lankarskis was more about more the building and, uh, separate ownerships and who is responsible for what. And it may cover everything legally, but.
Oh, but is it, is it in excess of what it should cover? Because I think it really only should cover the stormwater part, shouldn't it?
No, their homeowners association has to cover everything associated with what their operations are for their condo association. So they, they, that's gotta be fully comprehensive.
Because it's a condo also.
Right. All we really care about is the stormwater maintenance and the site maintenance and that kind of stuff.
Okay, so it can't be too full. It's not like we're gonna find out that it has too much in it, I guess.
No, and it's town, town council. It's, um, up to them. I don't know the legal details, so.
My question is, what's still pending through the chair?
On the project?
Yeah. There was a, you know, bunch of, uh, items that was need to be taken care, even before, uh, we do anything. One of those things I do remember was the bond, bond estimation, based on the things need to be done. And also, you know, I did see the Mylar in the planning board room, but is that the Mylar is sufficient as an, uh, our?
Did VHB get it also? I think you, you submitted the ASBIL.
ASBIL, is it sufficient, Vinnie?
I have an unrolled Mylar. I saw the draft that was emailed electronically. I assume it's the same thing, and I think I made comments on that. And the comments that I made were relative to, an ASBIL plan has to include like utilities, drainage, uh, any easements, all that stuff. And I think we got a response back that said it was gonna be updated. They have all that information, it would be included. But we're still waiting on VHB for their review of all, everything that's been submitted to them.
And they did get a copy?
Yes, they were included in the email.
Okay.
So what about that, uh, the stone wall at the entrance? Is that stays?
If that, yeah, that I don't know. Right now, um, like I said, I didn't open up the plan. It looks like a portion of it is in the towns, on the town property. So it can either be removed or it gets an easement. I'm not sure how you get an easement from the town, but we would need one or the other.
Wasn't that what the bond was all about?
That's part of what the bond was gonna include is to rectify whatever outstanding issues remain.
So we don't have to solve the wall problem before we can finish the project for the Lankarskis, right?
Well, the project's not finished until the wall is solved, the trash is solved, the turnaround is solved, uh, the ASBIL stuff is solved. I mean, I, we're not far off, but.
No, but I.
Tied up.
And recall emails about it, and the, the trash has a paid contract or some signed contract to pick up with, that's paid by them, not by us.
Well, we have to see that and see where it's, where it's being stored, cuz it can't be stored within fifty feet of Holt Street. So there are some more details that, that probably would be included in the ASBIL, I assume, the, or unless it's just the trash is to be put out in front of your garage doors on whatever day, but we need to see the details of what's involved.
So I, I sent the contract to you weeks ago, and we've already started, that pickup started this week, and so that's already been established and it's already started.
I agree, it has to be written in someplace. That's what he is saying. It's not a big deal.
It has to be what?
It's not a big deal. You are with it there, but it has to be recorded someplace. That's what he's trying.
I recall seeing something though, or maybe it was just an email that said it was solved, but I don't remember.
Yeah, right. So, so what I remember about it, and somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, is that, um, our, our approval said that the units are responsible, like that there is no trash pickup by the town here. That is what it said. And so that's what should be happening.
And that's what's already started. That is what's happening, yes.
So we should be fine with that.
Right, but the, you know, so some of these, some of these, um, uh, you know, things that are put in place, like saying fifty feet from Holt Street. So what does the guy, the first guy have to bring his trash to the neighbor? Cuz he's within fifty feet of Holt Street. I just, so, but it gets picked up at the end of each driveway by a private hauler. I gave you the contract. We've already started our program. We've already started getting picked up. Not so sure what else you would need from that.
Yeah, I didn't read the contract. I didn't see it, but that was sent to VHB to confirm that it complies with the approval and standard practice. So we're waiting for a response on it.
And I guess the other half is that the town's agreement that was haphazardly in place is that they are not gonna pick up. That was the only other half of it. Sure.
Right, right. I, I think there was just a little confusion on the town side that that was, this was not going to be town pickup. That's right, Mark.
Right, and just, and then, Mr. Lankarski, you're saying that the town is, does not pick up. It's your private hauler. Right, it's already started. They were here this week picking up trash. We already have our bins and it's already, it's already in progress. Okay. It was signed. And Vinnie, what do you think about the, the fifty, if there's a conflict where the end of the driveway is within fifty feet of Holt Street? Can we, can we default to end of driveway being an, an adequate location?
Yeah, I'm not even sure what the wording. I remember there was something about, I think it was fifty feet from Holt Street, cuz we didn't wanna have all the containers brought up to the front and sitting out on Holt Street was the idea. Having the person put it at the end of their driveway by their garage or whatever it might be, that's kind of a different situation, one container versus a whole group of them for the whole day or whatever it might be. But the intent of the, the approval had something in it, and I don't know the wording for sure.
Okay. And the turnaround with the fire, is that, is that finished paved and that, that was completed in the ASBIL? Correct, yes. Okay. I think we're, we're.
Right, so that was a change to the plan, and it was never really requested, but I guess it is requested, and VHB is reviewing that as part of their, uh, final ASBIL review.
Well, has a review started or not with VHB? Cuz they've not contacted me. I don't, I don't think I've seen anything from them, but I don't know what their schedule is. They may have already started.
I know.
Yeah, I don't know the answer.
Okay, so I, 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 you know, politely asked for, when, um, Wayne said that Brian had been scheduled, this was back in December. And I politely just said, can you please give me that schedule so I can inform the homeowners that somebody will be on their property walking around? And I just haven't heard one thing back from anybody, so I don't know where we're at with VHB. It's been radio silence.
Yeah, I haven't seen anything directly on that. I've seen, we've had other correspondence on other projects, but not on this one.
But you said he's, he's reviewing that turnaround, you said? So there is a review?
It was all submitted to him. The sole, the whole package was submitted to him. You submitted it.
Right, but I didn't know he was reviewing it. Nobody, I didn't, I, I haven't heard back from him after I submitted anything, so I'm not aware of any review underway.
Well, we can contact him tomorrow and find out.
Okay, yeah.
So one of the other issues, and, um, I, I bless you. So one of the other issues was the parking requirement or the parking regulation, um, under, uh, the site plan, uh, I mean, sorry, under the zoning of five point two C with regards to setback. Says there are no parking areas within ten feet of the lot line. And so I, I spoke with building commissioner George the next day after the meeting, and I asked him to explain that to me. Cuz I still didn't understand what was being, uh, portrayed by the board. And there is no parking area within ten feet of the lot line, but I was being told to rip up asphalt that's off property. And so George said if you, he would agree with a parking hatch painted on the parking lot as opposed to tearing up asphalt. So if that issue could be discussed here, I think it's, this needs to be clarified as to what's the intent here. If there's no parking there. Are we okay?
If there's no, if there's no parking there, why do you have asphalt there?
It's pre-existing with an easement.
That's not the answer. The question is, why is there asphalt there?
Cuz it's been here for twenty years.
And that, on your plan, you said you were gonna be removing that, and now you're changing that you're not.
Well, but because now I read the intent of the bylaw and I think that there, that was put there in error.
Well, the, then submit a request for a change to the approval.
So you asking for another parcel of land to remove, to remove asphalt off this, the twenty Holt Street site? Is that your request?
No, you came in with a plan and submitted a request because there was asphalt that went from that property onto your property. You removed, removed a portion of it and didn't remove the ten feet more from the property line. So you removed the portion that was on your property, but didn't clear it back to meet the zoning requirement. And so that's why in, on your plan that you submitted, you proposed that you were gonna cut it back ten feet off the property line. You have not done that so far.
Right, based on input from the board, that was put on there in error stating that asphalt had to be removed from the property line. Now, that was pushed in the wrong direction, though. It was not pushed from the property line into twenty Holt Street, so that line is on that plan in error.
No, it's not an error. That was exactly what was intended, and that's what, what, I was aware of it, and that's what we wanted because it says in the bylaw, you can't have the parking within ten feet of the property line. So we have that abutting property in violation of zoning if that pavement is not removed.
Okay, so you wanna take.
Not taken out.
Are, are you talking about taking up that specific situation with the other owner? Or you're talking about twenty Holt, we're the applicant of twenty Holt Street.
But you also own the abutting property.
No, that's not true. It's a different legal entity.
What's the company?
It's a different legal entity.
Who is the company that owns it?
Causewell Realty Trust.
And who were the principals or trustees of that?
There's additional trustees that are not part of the twenty Holt Street project.
Then how in your plan could you have proposed to cut and do work on their property?
It was put there in error. I, I said that it was put in error. The line should have been ten feet into twenty Holt Street. Not, not, not the other direction.
No, the intent is to keep it out of the ten-foot setback.
I'm sorry?
The intent is to keep the paving and the parking out of the ten-foot setback. That's what the bylaw says.
Right, oh, you're talking about twenty Holt Street, correct?
Twenty Holt Street and the one, and the abutting property.
Okay, but that, this, this applicant is not, application is not for the abutting property. So we can't be discussing other adjacent properties. If you wanna address that issue separately, I'll take that on with you as a separate issue.
It's not anything for me to take on. It's the building inspector's interpretation of the zoning. If he says that that's not parking and it doesn't qualify, then have him write something and say he's fine with it not being a violation of the zoning. Right now, on your plan, you propose to do something. I'm just expecting you to do what you proposed.
But it's off property.
Uh, you put something on the plan. I'm expecting you to do what you proposed.
Okay, so section of the site plan review, three point six J one, rules and regulations says the board can waive strict compliance with, with their decisions. I'm requesting you.
What does that say? It can waive strict compliance with what?
Well, you want me to read the whole bylaw? It says.
Well, if you're gonna quote it to me, you have to quote it correctly, cuz it only allows us to waive site plan review portions, not zoning compliance issues.
Right, and you're saying it's on a site plan and you want me to adhere to it, and I'm asking for, and so a waiver from that or asking you to waive strict compliance to a mistake that was put on a plan. That's all I'm asking for. It's an adjacent parcel of land. If you wanna address that issue, I'm more than happy to. But this project should not be held up for an issue that you wanna address on an adjacent parcel of land that's owned by somebody else. It's a le, different legal entity. So I can understand if you wanna address that issue, and I will, I will take that on with you, but you'll have to put it in writing and send it to the legal owner of that parcel of land saying you want them to do something because of a, of a, of a site plan that was approved of an adjacent parcel, and that's, that's where I'm going here. It's, it's not part of this site plan review. I know what you're saying, it's on the, I know what you're saying, it's, okay.
It's on the plan, it's part of the review, and if it's not done, then we may allow it. But you have to request that when you do your ASBIL plan, you submit a list of things that were different from the approved plan.
On twenty Holt Street?
Has that been submitted?
Wait a minute, on twenty Holt Street or on a Jason?
A list of things that are different from the plan that you submitted that we approved.
We require a certification from an engineer that everything was built according to the approved plan. And then we also allow that things change under construction, and if something has not been, uh, constructed according to the plan, they make a note of it in their certification and say, this has been done because of such and such a reason. And the board then can say, yes, that's okay, or no, it's not okay. We have not gotten any of that. That's in the approval. Please read the approval letter.
Okay, but we're talking about twenty Holt Street, correct?
Where else is it?
Are you expanding the boundary of this application to adjacent parcels?
Can I ask one thing? Do we have an ASBIL?
Yes.
Did, did you submit a ASBIL?
Yes. Weeks ago.
And is this, is this, is this mentioned in the ASBIL for the change?
No, okay, because I was requested to put more information on it, so I had my engineers update the plan. And I have, I'm, I will call him in the morning with a list of any, I told him, don't finalize the plan because this just keeps moving with different stuff, and I don't wanna have additional requests. So he's waiting to print the plan tomorrow if there's no more, um, you know, asks of the board. So I'm, I'm, I have him holding the plan with the additional information that was requested. Barring any new requests, I'm gonna go final with it, but I just don't wanna do it a third time. And so my, uh, my thought of this is, Vinnie's talking about something that was put on an, an adjacent parcel of land, and he wants to hold that because it's on the plan, you have to do it. And all I'm saying is, the by, the zoning bylaw, the intent of the zoning bylaw has nothing to do with what's on the plan. It has zero to do with it. There is no parking over there for twenty Holt Street. There's no, there's only one little triangle of land that's not even a legal parking spot. It doesn't comply with the parking space requirements of West Boylston. And on top of that, we have a legal easement that covers to pass and repass there. So this, I have multiple ways to say, this does not apply to me here. It's, first of all, there's a sliver of land of twenty Holt Street.
Okay, okay, Mr. Lankarski, I want, I, I wanna, I wanna try to, I wanna try to resolve this and move on. And I think we've said a bunch of things about this same issue multiple times here. So what is happening is that it was on the plan that was approved. In your ASBIL, you have to show that you have not done this thing, and you mark out that this is why this thing was not done when we are reviewing the ASBIL, and, and we can move on from there. I understand that it is on a different property. It sounds like you accidentally put it on the original approved plan. Fine, there's a reason. This was not supposed to be here because it is part of a separate property. We have met the zoning bylaws for the property we are talking about, right? That's a, that's a perfect reason for why the ASBIL is slightly different from the plan that we approved. So I think we can move on from here unless anybody has anything else.
That makes sense. The question that he had, though, about changes to the, uh, ASBIL plan, we probably should wait till you get a response from VHB to see what they have to say. Instead of having them prepare something, and then you have to have them redo it, wait to hear back from VHB, so they can update it one more time, and that'll be that.
How is VHB gonna do their, how are they gonna do their, uh, their review if, or onsite, uh, if they don't have an ASBIL?
I thought you submitted the ASBIL that, you submitted to us. I thought you submitted that to them as well. And so far, there were comments that I had made, but those can be incorporated with comments that VHB can make. I mean, it's up to you. You could do it. You could have your engineer do it again. You can do it tomorrow and based on the planning board's comments, but if our engineer has more comments, then it would have to change again, and that's fine. I was just trying to save you that one extra step.
That, I guess the question is, when will I hear from VHB? It's been three weeks and it's been, I haven't heard anything.
Well, I mean, they, they have an extended, you know, it's the, things are tough now. There are not as many people like there's, there's at least a four week uh lead time. I think that they've ended it and it was the holiday too. So I mean, that probably does not.
Right, and I'll, I'll, I'll contact them tomorrow and see what the status was.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know why they haven't responded to you. I remember seeing the email saying, we'll try to schedule someone to go out there. And I haven't seen anything either.
Okay, so you know, we whittled down the list to the HOA docs that just weren't submitted to town council. I also submitted the uh stormwater management docs. Those weren't submitted to town council. Um, I've given the asbill to VHB, haven't heard from them. Um, I, I kinda need some guidance here as to, we haven't heard back on the bond issue. It's been a month. Ho- how can we, I, I need to start expediting some of this stuff because it seems like, you know, I a, a month here and a month there is just, um it's tough to, to deal with in the business world here. I, you know, I have to move forward here and you guys put the provisions in this decision that basically hold up my project because I can't, I can't get so, what, Vinny, do you want to say something?
Nothing new. Same as I've always said, this should, this should have all been addressed before you got your building permit, not your occupancies. This all was supposed to be done before you were issued a building permit. As far as the homeowners association, the stormwater stuff. That's why we put it in there and specifically worded that you aren't allowed or aren't supposed to be issued a building permit until that documentation is prepared and complete.
My lawyer said that that's not necessary and it's not, he doesn't think that that's something that's uh necessary. There's nee- no need for a review by town for HOA docs.
Right, well, see the problem we're having is that your homeowners association documents now don't include anything about stormwater. But in our approval, it requires it to include it.
Okay, so, so I submitted those weeks ago though, and I haven't, nobody's to look at them. So I gave you those December eighth.
Well, you sent them to the clerk of the planning board, not the whole planning board. So when she didn't check her email for a few days, it languished there for a little bit. Then it came to the whole board. She forwarded it over. So it's, things get lost in the holidays.
I, I apologize, but I mean, it, it is a particularly busy time for, for everybody getting ready for the holidays and also for my own actual work that pays me. So I, I, I didn't see it and I missed it and I apologize for that. And I just sent it over to ask for the review, but um, it didn't get there uh, at that time. What I also see is that Wayne did respond last on December 21st, which again is right before the holiday saying that um he'd ask Brian to go through this information with the net, within the next two to three late weeks. Unlikely I can get his or anyone's attention until early January.
Good, so that, you're seeing that, good.
Right, and he said he scheduled Brian and that was back in December and I just haven't heard back from him. So I guess my question is this, guys. What don't you have that you need that we can't release another temporary occupancy? You have all temporary occupancies holding me back on that. You have, we were going to establish a bond for the wall to hold off on that. I, I've given you your asbill. I'm updating the asbill. I'm curious as to why.
Mr. Van Karski, I'm not going to address this with the temporary occupancies at this time. I asked town council. I have not heard back as to whether it was legal or not, but it, it, it is what was in the, the approval that was signed and put forward. It was six units. That's, that was what, that's what we agreed to. And so that's where we are right now.
Okay, and I, and I'd like to make a formal request that you can waive strict compliance based on site plan review three point six J one. The rules and regulations that you can waive strict compliance with your own decision, seeing that I've provided 98% of what you guys want. And I've been willing to give a bond and I would like to go on record here and state that I feel that I've done my thing here. I'm trying to give you everything. And I'm getting nothing in return. And I'm curious as to why am I running into these roadblocks or these, um, these issues that I don't feel are substantial. There is no safety issues. There's no non-compliance with zoning or any uh, any code issues. These are all administrative issues that we're talking about. HOA review by town council, you're gonna hold up a, a closing for that? You're gonna hold up, you know, because of, you know, my, my engineer has already signed off on the overall uh project. VHB is basically just gonna rubber stamp them. They're not gonna certify anything. So I've provided a lot here and I'm curi- I would, I'm asking the board if, will you release one more temporary and hold one temporary or one other? Uh, you have all temporaries. And I'm willing to establish a bond in the amount that your engineer is gonna come up with. I, I just am curious as to why I would run into a roadblock when I'm trying to do all this here. Chair, can you speak to that?
Uh well, I think that, I mean, my answer is that we're just trying to get everything to be completed and, and this is this is the approval and this is, is the, the approval that we put forward. We're trying to get that completed. And so I'm not sure, I, I will entertain some discussion on.
I think we need something in writing from you to, if you're requesting something specific, I would suggest you write it in and request it and then let it at our next meeting.
I'm gonna put it in the public record right now. I would like to request that the planning board follow their rule of J one in section three six. The planning board may adopt such rules and regulations for carrying out its duties under this section. The board may, with such action allowed by law in the public interest and not inconsistent with the purpose and intent of this bylaw, waive strict compliance with any requirement of this site plan review bylaw or its rules and regulations. I would like the board to please grant me that request for one more temporary occupancy. And I'd like to have some input from the board on that, please.
I don't know that we're prepared to give you any input at this time. What you are asking is for us to consider a, a request that you have against the decision that we made. You are asking us to consider your request and I do expect it in writing.
I just read it and I put it in the public.
And we will consider it. And we will consider it. I, I, we don't, we do not have to give you a decision right at this minute. We, we do not. So, um I, I understand, I understand you are, you are desperate to get these two units sold and you have in fact already promised them to people who are trying to move and have sold their homes. And that is not our problem.
I understand, but what, but what, why the, why the absolute roadblock when I've tried to provide everything that you've asked for? And there's really nothing left here. It's administrative issue.
It's not, it's not, it's not complete at this time, right? It's, it is not completely, the, the approval though I put forth was that all the things be done and then everything can be released, but temporary occupancy was six units and that, that's, that's the end. We appreciate that you're working towards completing the project. That is, that is the point. That was the point of that.
Can I ask why that was?
And, no, the, the, I think, I think we're, I think we're done with this conversation at this point. We, we took a lot of time on this last time and we are taking a lot of time on this again. And we have a hard stop at a certain point because we have enough, the other people have other meetings to go to that are that, that must have gotten to you. So we actually have to end. And so we have other things that we need to discuss. Um, so I, I we will consider your request for next time, but we're gonna stop the discussion on it now.
So does that mean that request is gonna take till next board meeting to get an answer or is this something that you will respond to in a timely manner?
I, first of all, don't think that there are any particular time limits on needing to respond to requests for us to revisit our own decision. Um, and I think that I, 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 I don't know if this is a matter that would need to be a public record kind of matter. Vinny, maybe you can advise me on that, but it may need to wait until a public meeting.
Well, a decision have to wait till the next, till a public.
Yeah, but we need to hold on it, right? If you are wearing it anything.
Yeah.
We need, the board has told us, not only the, it's not the chairman's, it's not the one member present. Anyway, you know, uh, I, I would like to uh say the chat. So we do have to stop at a certain point. Can we move on, please?
Yes. We can, in fact. Okay, so our next uh agenda item is.
You want to say something, Mark?
Uh, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Actually, you, you don't, you don't get to ask if Mark wants to say something because I'm the chair of the meeting. So we're moving on. Zoning changes, discussion update. Um so we have so I think, I mean, we, we, we discussed several of the zoning changes. I think we are all happy with what we had put together. Um, I think I just need to ask Melanie to send them out to the other boards for some, for some feedback. So I'm gonna do that next time. Um, Vinny, I know, I know you really want to just do the strike through on the um uh, accessory apartment. I don't, I would like, I, I want to just remove that for now, only because I think that's a whole big separate discussion that is gonna cause a lot of things where where the rest of it, I think we could manage to get through and then maybe put that before a public hearing and, and get it on the books. So um, what I would like to do is just, you know, not include that part of deleting the accessory apartments, but push forward everything else.
Question, that's, I'm fine with that. I, we have George here. Does he have any comments? Cause we're trying to move it along. If he has comments or suggestions and changes, if he could get those to us tomorrow before Melanie sends it off to the other boards and commissions.
And, and George, I can send you the final copy of what we have.
Yes.
Okay.
Should we put in the, the point then in that line about accessory apartments that we are considering, you know, omitting? I mean, just so that when people come to discuss it, they can talk about both.
I was gonna, I, I wanted, I think accessory apartments, I mean, we remember that um Dave brought some changes to the accessory apartment and, and we had a whole session on that. Um I don't know, a couple of years ago before COVID. And there was a lot of discussion about it then. I feel like it's, it's one of those pieces where maybe we need to have that as a separate line item. What I'd like to do is get all of those other ones kind of through and get the comments and get them queued up for the public hearing. And if we want to, you know, get, get the accessory apartment thing back in, we could just do that, that one separately.
Correct.
I just, I mostly, I just don't want to hold up everything else. And I think that one's gonna bear a little more discussion. Yeah, yeah. Awesome. All right. Um, so moving on from there, subdivision rules and regulations, the potential, I, Mark, I know you, you're, you're interested in putting some things forward. I don't know if we have any.
The documentation, that's okay.
That's okay. That's okay. All right. So we'll come back to that next time. How about that? How about we come back to that next time? Let's try to have a goal of, of doing that. And I'm happy to work with you on.
And then, and on those ones, would they be for this town meeting if we can do it by next month? Is that, is that time enough?
The, I, I would, I would try to queue them up with all these other changes, right?
No, no, subdivision, we don't need to go to town meeting. It's a public hearing and a action by the board. It doesn't have to go to town meeting for subdivision changes. So all we need is the wording and then we can process that ourselves.
That's excellent.
Okay.
So would we need, Vinny, then would we need to have a separate public hearing for those versus these bylaw changes that were, okay, got it.
Well, it could be joined together, but it doesn't have to be together with them.
It's a separate, it's a separate notice, isn't it? It can be at the same scheduled time.
Same notice, including this, both wording for that we're gonna change the zoning and the subdivision rules and regulations. Or it could be one for one night, one for a different night or two different ones for the same night. It's just, it's a different.
Oh, so it would be much more convenient if we did all of them together on one night. And it's just that one of them, if we vote to approve it, then it just happens. And the other one has to go to town meeting. Okay. That's, that's, that's great. That's reasonable. And I think that's something we can, I think, I think that's something that we could get done.
And still for next month, perfect.
Yeah, yep. All right. I think we are down to uh invoice payments and meeting minutes. Did everybody get a chance to look at the meeting minutes?
I did not.
Yep.
I thought they looked good. Um.
Pulled a lot of information down to not much, not many pages.
Well done, Melanie. Thank you as always for distilling our comments.
We need a motion.
For approval. Are you ma- sorry Raj, are you making a motion?
Yes, uh, so moved.
Excellent. Do I have a second? Second, okay. Thank you, Vinny. All right, we'll do a roll call. Raj?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Vinny?
Yes.
Mark?
I'll go with yes.
And I am a yes. Excellent. Okay, we've got invoices to sign and I know those will, those will happen. Um and it, we will meet next February eighth at seven PM. Uh, I'm, I am gonna stick with virtual particularly for this snowy time. In case we have a storm, we will not have to cancel the meeting because we will be able to do it online. Um in potentially snowy time. I hope it's snowy time. I don't know about the rest of you, but I'd like to see a little snow, you know, it's, it's winter, it's that time. Uh, but at any rate. We'll see you all next time. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Before, before you, before you adjourn, can I just ask a really quick question? Okay, we're still waiting for the, for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to send out something that's gonna tell us about the new um accessory apartment policy. Um who would be the person or who, what group would be the ones that would try to, how would we go about getting that from the state? So that when we, time comes to discuss the accessory apartment, we'll have all the information and not have to, you know, play around, play around and keep waiting and waiting. So meanwhile, because I, I like the idea that you're separating it. Because I think that's gonna take longer. I just want to know how we can go about, how can we expedite from the state of getting that information for us? And who would we contact?
Is that something CMRC could give us? Maybe?
Yeah, well, I think we will get a notice, notification from the state when the state has prepared their stuff because as a planning board, we get the notifications then.
Okay, because it's been two years.
Well, they haven't done it though. That's the trouble.
We don't know. That's what I'm saying. Okay, all right, okay. All right, no problem.
Right, so you have. At some time we'll, we'll get it.
I got a, I got a motion to adjourn here. Do I have a second?
Oh, second.
Thank you. All right, uh, roll call vote, Raj?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Vinny?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
And I am also a yes. All right, great. Thank you all.